Okay. Jimmy, you ready?
Yep. Of course you are. So, uh, probably first October or something, email the board and let you know that Dakota turned into a reg nation. So I'm gonna need to backfill that condition. We've interviewed, just like we did before, a series of questions. We've done the background checks. Actually, we require them bringing the state police stuff in to us. We do my case, and then the jail runs one for us. So we've brought people in, interviewed them, did just like before, based off the scores. We're gonna make an offer to Craig Ball. He's actually from Viggo County. He's from Terre Haute. He's on Sugar Creek right now. He fits us pretty decent. I'd like to smooth him in to take Dakota's spot.
Where Dakota go?
Dakota went back to Black Duck. And I know it's about four thousand dollars. He's doing the exact same thing he'd be doing here, but for about four thousand dollars more. So you can't blame me for...
I hear that a lot.
Yeah, he has other opportunities he's pursuing. So we support him. Shook his hand, thank you for his time. He's gonna stay on as a volunteer force when he's around, but he's not gonna have much time to do the medic class and then work full-time EMS also. So...
Did you say Craig?
Craig, or Clayton Ball.
Clayton.
Clayton Ball.
I'll make a motion and accept his...
On paper?
It's like...
What's his start date, or do you have a start date for him when you're done?
It'd be based off how long he's gonna stay down there.
Okay.
I'll give him his paperwork. If he can come up and work on his days off and train would help, you know, when he comes in, he can get the ground running, so...
Is he full-time where he is now?
Uh, no. He pretty much works full-time, but it's not a full-time position. So I see before you run off or sit down, and we got iPad grants, iPad grant, or...
Oh.
Like a chair?
I know that one, I just received that notification today for the chair that the apartment wanted.
What's that? Stair chairs to bring somebody down like a narrow down.
Bring them downstairs, okay.
Especially with these new buildings going on over there, them stairs are super narrow, straight up, and all the living floors are facing other than kitchen and family room is upstairs.
Okay.
So like EMS, both of them units are out, and we gotta go to get them down, and we have no way of getting them there. We put them in a chair and carry them. So this will actually take some straight down.
Okay.
So yeah, and I know Mandy put him for that force, and we wanna thank her for that, because it'll come in handy. We could've used it up here on Jefferson Street the other day, so...
Okay.
Well, I talked to Branson Insurance today too, and she, you know, was very thankful that we received that. They look at it as a, um, your injury, you know, your less injury lifting and stuff like that, so...
Because you can see, the handles will actually come out on the bottom, so you can have a guy at the bottom and top, and if the weight's on the stairs, you're just controlling going down. So you don't need all that narrow, and you can't get two people, so you've got all the weight.
Yep, okay.
Anything else? I think we'll be out of your hair. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Mike, Ash, yes?
Yep, sure, yeah. So Ash, over back, had this idea, that he ran by me a little while back, about maybe putting a well in, a water well, over by the athletic fields, by the practice fields, the football field. Um, in part because we were using so much water over the last couple of years trying to get the fields up into decent condition, so kinda let him talk about his thoughts on that a little bit. I thought, "Sounds like a great idea," but I understand it might not be something that you could jump right to an approval on. It may take some discussion, I understand that completely, but I thought I'd let him kinda take it away for a minute or two, and then we'll answer whatever questions you might have.
So we're gonna kinda approach this as, we would like to save some taxpayer money. Um, we're spending about five to six hundred dollars per month on irrigation of the football field and the practice field. Um, so over probably three to four years, we could get a return on our money. Um, we've got some estimates on irrigation, on the, uh, the well itself, and so the return on our investment would be a pretty quick turnaround. But it's within city limits. We'd like to have permission if we could do this well, and it would not be for drinking water, it'd only be for irrigation purposes. Um, so it would be isolated, it would not be tied into the school water system at all.
Well, Nick, that would be a question for you, I do believe.
Well, so, I mean, right now the ordinance is if you're within town limits that you're on the water, so... So I think they're asking for an exception from that.
Right.
But there's no legality whether you can even have one in the city limits?
I mean, it's up to the municipality, I suppose, whether or not you want to allow it.
Right.
Uh, it's pretty good logic there, Ashley, good job, that makes sense. Uh, yeah, so I guess it'd be up to us if we wanted to allow this.
I'd just caution, it's a slippery slope though, because...
Right.
Once you allow it for one entity, sorry, one entity...
Well, this is a tax-free entity, start with.
Certainly, yeah.
And, and so that's in your favor.
How soon you want to try to, I mean, if you had approval, when would you want to start?
Oh, I wasn't thinking till probably spring.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that gives us a little time to discuss.
Sure. Yeah, well, yeah, you're right. And once you do it, you may be asked to do it again, and so under what circumstances would you ever consider doing it if you did it just one time? You know, the tax-free entity, uh, it's more a tri-tier that makes sense. Um, and there may be some others, I just...
Right, I mean, I just, I guess what I'd say is that give me a little bit of time to look into it, research it.
Well, should look a little bit, guess, see if there's anything out there.
See if there's a way we can qualify it potentially, so we don't have to constantly have somebody asking that question, because I know, you know, residentially, a lot of people are probably, you know, or could potentially ask that question.
Well, we could craft as such that no residential commercial properties would qualify, so basically it brings it down to, you know...
Non-for-profit or, you know, tax-free entities, I'll tell you what, figure out a way to do it if you get better chairs. So yeah, I, you know, I'd say we just need some qualifying language in there if it's something the board's gonna consider.
Well, I'm positive for it at this point. I, I think it, uh, uh, good for the school, good for the town.
I'll defer to my attorney.
Well, yeah, I am too, I said at this point.
I would just say, let's, let's look at qualifying language and see what we can do there, or if we can do anything there. If we're not allowed to do something there, that's, that's a little tougher, but I think we can probably amend our ordinance as such of the qualifying language.
Have you approached any other schools? Do any other schools do this?
I've not heard anybody else do that. I thought it was a really creative idea.
It is, it is.
I thought it was a really great idea, so, um, maybe we need to come here and have that discussion with you. I understand that you don't want to open up the floodgates, so to speak, and we're talking about water, but...
But very few entities in city limits qualify it. We put in the restrictive language that Nick's talking about.
I, I just need to look and make sure we can do that.
Yeah, it takes some pressure off our current water needs, and, uh, lose a little revenue, but you also take some pressure off the system that, uh...
You know, the new apartments down on Market Street will need more volume of water.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that we're running low on water right now after last week, but, um, I think in the long run it'd be beneficial. I, I don't see that maybe residential people would spend ten or twelve thousand dollars to put in a well. It, it would take a long time to recuperate their money. Might be another thought on this subject.
Okay.
So we'll...
I'd say, I mean, let Nick do some research, we'll get back to you, we'll table at this time.
So we'll just wait for someone to contact us back, or should we come back in a month, or...
We'll reach out once I, once I get some answers for you.
Okay, yep. Okay, thanks.
Sounds good.
With consideration.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
You ready, Jeff?
Yeah. Oh, hang on a minute. I'm here for the title to be signed, for the commission that we're getting rid of. Uh, we were supposed to go pick up our commissions tomorrow, but Kelly Chevrolet in Fort Wayne had some kind of hack that breached their system, so we're not able to go pick them up. Tentatively, we're gonna go pick them up on Wednesday. Uh, and our guy that installs our lights and sirens and stuff is aware, and he's agreeing to try and squeeze us back in line, so...
Where's he?
He's in, uh, Greencastle.
It's going.
Yes.
Just come over, or you take them over?
We take them over there and drop them off. There's quite a bit of work to do, and he's got a super nice garage over there that...
Yeah, Jeff, I mean, yeah.
Did you sign with them or no?
Nothing. I have the title here a second.
Which one are you getting rid of?
We're getting rid of the two thousand and thirteen...
One that's been in the shop more than it's been driving.
Lightly.
Somebody bought a dog cage, apparently, uh, is that going in one of these vehicles?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's gonna go in one of the new products. But sixteen that we have that currently has the dog cage in it, uh, will be, uh, needing to be replaced here before too long, another couple of years, so... And we do have some part-time officers that are also canine officers, so with that cage there, they'll be able to use that one, and not, sometimes when you put dogs in the same cage, that creates problems, you know?
It's too bad we don't have a early build, right?
Thirteen, right?
Yes.
Are you satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay, Jeff.
Yep, uh, finally got some information back from Walback Valley on some additional paving projects. I sent that out as an email way last week, and, uh, just for comparison, this is now the price excavating also. The price is generally a little bit cheaper, but keep in mind that was done back in May, and fuel prices and everything gone up considerably, so I imagine they're probably fairly comparable when it comes right down to it. I don't have a recommendation for you at this time other than just, uh, give it some thought, take a look at it, see what you think we can do. I can't give you a firm number on what we have left in our budget until we get final invoices from Walback Valley, our community crossings grant, which we're still waiting on them to get to us. Uh, the other items too, I don't even know if they're, they're still running their asphalt rights.
So I was gonna ask you if you heard anything?
Yeah, probably getting close to shutting down.
You said you got a bid on members' notes.
Yeah. So, uh, I'm gonna have a little bit more information for you guys, I'll, I'll kick it to you as, as needed.
Yeah, Jeff, I, I kinda, it's almost too late, I feel, I mean, just looking at the current weather, next week, ten days.
It's gonna be cold.
Can we go rent and do it next spring?
Well, we could, uh, but I guess another issue, I mean, you're looking around eighty-six thousand dollars, and, you know, if we use that as a match, we could be doing about three hundred and forty thousand dollar project, and we use that as a match with the crossings. I'm thinking, geez, I don't know, maybe we need to regroup and throw these projects into something where we go after some match, maybe, uh, plus having a little weather in. Um, it's a good idea, but it just kinda got light in the air, and I, uh...
I understand, yeah.
Probably try to leverage your money.
Lot of delays, or that's why I didn't bring any kind of recommendations.
Right. What do you guys think?
Oh, I agree, I mean, I think we'd be better off putting that money against the community crossings and...
Yeah, I'm not sure where we are on our community crossings. We, uh, you do every six months, right? Send it every six months, community crossings?
Yeah, we'll have another, uh...
Call?
Another call, probably in January.
And then we, we, uh...
And we were looking at throwing in the Jackson Board East as part of that, uh, community crossings grant, and we also have the, uh...
Well, is that project going to be ready to build by then?
I think, I think Roger's getting fairly close on that. I know he was wanting to shoot a few more elevations just to double-check his engineering.
When can we have Roger to, uh, come on down and talk to us about it? They had the nice of Jax building, and the Jax-Jefferson Street projects. No, we talked about these over before, and that's, did we talk about doing that there? Actually, I thought the Oprah, we were gonna go for, uh, Oprah on...
Stormwater is what I suggested.
Stormwater and Community on Jax and Jefferson.
I, I thought it was gonna be a combination of both on the Oprah, but I could be, I could be wrong on that.
And Oprah, when's that application due, Cindy?
Oh, there's various rounds every year, there's usually...
But they did, at one point it was not funded, and decided to refund it, and they took the funding out of it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we were just waiting on a, a planning document from Stormwater.
Okay, okay, yeah, I think, okay, so, anyway, back to trying to leverage some of this stuff, some of this money, uh, we can get a lot, a lot more done with three and thirty-nine.
Um, on the park, down at the tennis court?
Yeah.
We're gonna apply for a grant for, um, fifty percent match.
Oh, that'd be nice.
So that's the only one, and Brandy and I talked about it, we need an additional preparation out of one, is that what we need?
If we're gonna have to do it all this year, or we can...
Well, you're right.
We can appropriate it and be distributed.
It's just...
Yeah, you know, so we may not have to do it.
So is blacktop the normal material they use for tennis courts?
I put asphalt down.
They put asphalt down, did they seal it with something?
You can, there's different types of something, you can, you can put that...
I mean, normally they look like a nice smooth surface, you don't see, unless they get a really fine finish on the asphalt, uh...
Sometimes I think they use sand in the asphalt really.
To get it better.
You get a smoother finish.
Let's go play courts.
Play? We got plenty of that right here.
So do we need to do anything now?
Probably not.
Just, we can just appropriate it, if you're planning on it, we could...
Yeah.
...appropriate the money for a shoot.
Cause she's applying for the grant now, she's, as soon as we say okay, then she...
We'll get it all done before they come in anyway, so we have to do something on asphalt. Mr. Shump, didn't the school just do some of their...
Did they use the asphalt as a basin to finish it?
Maybe.
Okay, I was thinking the high school was re-touched.
All my boards are just for an asphalt over there.
We had some patchwork done with it.
I don't have anything as far as a top coat or anything like that.
Cause I wonder if we just re-coat what's there with the top coat over it, seal, seal the cracks in the midcoat over it, instead of putting new asphalt in.
That looks like they sit a little green.
It's almost more of a rubbery, not a, not asphalt.
It does look like it's still like gray, so like the water...
If you're wanting a regular type tennis court, they're gonna get it all the hell it's logical.
What's wrong?
Um...
Re-touch.
By the time you put them, whatever it is that the top coat covering is...
I don't, that's a smart decision.
Yeah, it's, it's whatever they want.
I don't know. All I know is I just don't know what it's gonna be.
Are people gonna play tennis on asphalt?
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
Pickleball is...
It's gonna have a little line in the...
The issue with it right now is the, uh, the cracks in the asphalt, I, I guess are not conducive to that particular activity.
I've never played that.
When they put some deers in that, or...
It's true, it is.
You know?
Have to, have to play the, play the field.
Play the whole thing.
Yeah, you know, you have to know where the cracks are.
So, doesn't sound like you may have a problem with it if parks weren't going in.
No, I'm all right.
He said they're getting ready to go on their courts that we could maybe partner with the school.
Well, that, that's interesting.
If they come in, I mean, we think we would be able to get it.
Why don't you go and put a loan in?
Scratch my back? Mm-hmm.
Or anything else on the, the paving or the tennis courts? Okay. Uh, this came in too, uh, Troy just handed this to me, these are a couple quotes on some of the items that we were looking at. One of them is the extension down, uh, Bridgeton Road to extend the two inch water line down to ten twenty-nine South Bridge Road. Uh, the cost on that is thirty-five thousand five hundred, and if you'd like it for me to, I would gladly take the time to put together a, an estimate on how long it'd take you to get your investment back based on the number of people that you could potentially hook up on that.
How far would we go in the road there?
Uh, to ten twenty-nine.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna get...
Is that a mile?
A mile.
Uh, let's see.
Fifty hundred feet?
Yep, fifteen hundred feet.
Okay. Uh, how many houses will we pick up?
I think two or three.
Uh, three thousand five hundred?
They can pay in the end.
Wow.
What size, what size of main was it?
Two.
Two.
That's down New Discovery?
Mm-hmm.
I thought you said Bridgeton.
No, yeah, yeah, Bridgeton, I'm sorry, not, not New Discovery.
What'd that quote come from?
Hey, you Mac.
Okay. Uh, does it probably go down the further you go?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not the estimator.
Uh, I'd say probably not.
There's a couple of roof punches in there, I mean, you know, and that's all the material and everything.
Okay.
And I will say, just, the material's through the roof right now.
Yeah.
The twelve-inch pipe is forty-two dollars for the slime replaced.
Forty-two.
Put the kit on the, going out east of town.
Do the homeowners want to sign that for you?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so.
Well, I think everything goes in cycles, and run down five, three expenses. What's the normal price?
I don't know. It's not that high.
No? Uh, I can't see us doing that at this point.
No, like I said, I could do some analysis for you, just, just so you can look at it.
Why would we do a turnover?
Why would...
How long is it?
They don't want, they don't want to put any money towards that, but they want it, or...
I don't think so.
Okay.
Uh, the, the second quote is on our, uh, box down on Martin Street, where we have an issue with the water line. It's, uh, well, exposed right at the culvert where that ditch is, and, uh, the price for that is nineteen thousand five hundred. That's one we probably ought to give consideration to, uh, just because it, it's not really a good idea to have that, that pipe exposed the way it is.
So what's the source of that?
That's down on Martin Road, down out toward, uh...
Down over the hill?
Yeah, down over the hill, the bottom of the hill, as you're going down, it's on the right, uh, there's a little culvert there in the ditch, and over time, the creek that's run down through there has kind of eroded out. And, uh, this calls for, uh, twelve-inch loying on Martin Street, dig out creek and work approximately sixty, uh, feet of, uh, twelve SDR twenty-one, four forty-fives and one hundred feet of pipe, and stall back around forty-fives. And that's kind of what the water's playing at for that.
What's the size of this pipe down there, the water pipe?
It's big.
Twelve inches.
The twelve-inch runs down that hill toward Rockville Lake?
Yeah.
We have water out of the lake, we have water in the lake, don't we?
But I think, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's why it's a big problem.
It's, it's a big one.
Uh, they pay every, yeah, we build a lake every month for water, I assume, or customers.
I think it doesn't end at the, end at the entrance to the, to the lake or...
Well, they supply water to the campers, if they have water.
Do, do they have a...
The whole lake, I mean, it's probably put it back to, to the campers, to, uh, where water is.
Well...
Comes in where that gate's at, at the, and it runs all the way back to the modern.
Well, I assume we're, well, just curious what kind of, what kind of revenue...
I'll have to look it up and see how to follow me on what they...
Yeah, well, a couple, you know, several thousand, but yeah, okay, well, it sounds like it's, uh, easy to fix regardless, but I'm just curious if the customers are out that way, that inches at, Rockville Lake, uh...
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
On the paper?
Yeah.
Alright.
I think that's a pretty good thing. Can I have that quote on that please, kind of conversation?
Yeah, if you want to scan it and send that to me, just so I can keep it.
So speaking of that road, Jeff, you may know, uh, last time I was on it, it looked like it's on the north side especially, and I think we probably need to do some riprap there.
We have issues with the ones that try to wash out there quite a bit?
Yeah, well, I've already, I'm sure it's...
We're the company, but we're having some more attention.
Hey, it may be picked up at the dirt patch out there and tried to, I know you guys did that some on, uh, Virginia there, uh, seemed to hold pretty good. So what's the wellhead thing? Pump, whatever?
Yeah, just, uh, for your information, um, we have a high-speed service, high-service pump, high-speed service pump, uh, number three at the pump house that's, uh, getting ready to probably go out on us, according to, to Cody and Troy, and we're gonna look at trying to get that repaired, uh, with NWS, we're trying to get an estimate. It's one of those deals where the longer we let it go, the more it'll cost us to get repaired, but we don't have a quote or anything for you yet, but chances are it'll probably be a solely, solely repair replacement for that. I think it's, Cody said it's like a seventy-five horsepower pump, so it's a, it's a dandy. Uh, and it says I have that information, I'll forward it to you, but again, it's just for your information, we've got that coming up.
Soften the blow, that's what it is.
It'll just give you a heads up.
Why don't you ask Santa for that?
Yeah, please.
I know.
Santa Claus, Santa Claus.
Okay, uh, everything, I, I texted Roger to see where we're on the Jackson Jax building.
I still haven't got the, the asbestos report back. I thought we maybe have it next week.
Did they come in and actually do, do, do it?
Yeah, they, they done that, and we're just waiting on a report, and once we get the report, Roger can put together the bid specs on remediation and, and tear it out, so we're still waiting on that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, the South Market, um, I talked to Kevin Cowens on the, on the storm board. Um, their meeting was brief, but they agreed with our assessment of us paying for that, because it's gonna come off that other project. Um, I just want, I mean, Maxwell's doing that, their part, right?
Correct. Structure Point came back and, and, uh, talked, talked about that last meeting. Structure Point's recommendation is that they wanted to move it about five feet to the west, uh, on the, the part that, uh, uh, the construction company it's down, Maxwell.
Oh, Maxwell.
About five feet to the west, uh, to make sure that there's not any conflict. You know, I think there would be, but moving it five foot would guarantee it, so we don't have to come back in and redo it.
That's fine with me, as long as everybody's on the same page, I mean, as long as Structure Point and Roger and Maxwell, I mean, if we have to have a meeting, I just want to make sure that we don't put that in and two years from now tear it back out.
Agreed.
That's ridiculous.
Can we get something in writing from somebody?
Well, that's what I said, we need to do.
That, that definitely needs to happen before the money's spent.
I mean, I know Maxwell's probably gonna do their, what's already on that project, but...
The other end, if he has a habit of...
Yeah.
Right, so then I guess the request would be that Structure Point tender something indicating that it's useful, that we're not gonna have to redo it, and that that cost will be taken off of the other bid, so that'd be something that Structure Point would need to issue to us.
Yeah, just look at that project total cost, it's going up.
A lot.
From four point five three to four point eight six, that's twenty percent of the town, be nine hundred and seventy thousand is what our total cost would be for the project. Uh, I know we've already expended some, we've got a balance in our fund here somewhere, but, uh, it's pretty balanced. Uh, yeah, the bids are, be left next September on that, if everything goes as planned, and that's, uh, not that far away.
I'm going, go.
I, uh, where are we, South Market? Yeah, we've got a bounce at our fifteen in that account now, so we're, we're in pretty good shape. Uh, and we spent some out of that, so we already have some committed to it, so...
And I'm waiting on some oysters to be paid.
Alright, so then I guess the request would be that Structure Point tender something indicating that it's useful, that we're not gonna have to redo it, and that that cost will be taken off of the other bid. So that'd be something that Structure Point would need to issue to us.
Yeah, just look at that project total cost, it's gone up.
A lot.
From four point five three to four point eight six, that's twenty percent of the town, be nine hundred and seventy thousand is what our total cost would be for the project. I know we've already expended some, we've got a balance in our fund here somewhere, but, uh, it's pretty balanced. Uh, yeah, the bids are be left next September on that, everything goes as planned, and that's, uh, not that far away.
I'm going, George.
I, uh, where are we, South Market? Yeah, we've got a balance at our fifteen in that account now, so we're, we're in pretty good shape. Uh, and we spent some out of that, so we've already have some committed to it, so.
And I'm waiting on some invoices to be paid.
So, uh, just, you might wanna know, there you go.
Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. What's your head going up, I tell you what? Uh.
One hundred thousand.
No, no, it went from four point.
Twenty seven.
Uh, five, four, sixty, seventy, eight, three, about two hundred and thirty thou, or three hundred and thirty thousand.
Oh.
Yeah.
Round, round.
Where are we, uh, where are we at on forty-one North two?
Oh, yeah, that one.
Yeah, uh.
Coming closer.
I think, according, I talked to Cindy last week about that, I think it was last week. And I think they're waiting on one more, he's supposed to be granted.
Did you figure out what Nathan's question was?
Yeah, I, talking to, uh, uh, Brian Hood about that, he gave me a call last week too. And it was just one of those deals where they, they would like to be able to, uh, to connect their, their lateral line in to where Structure Point is gonna put their, their stub out or clean out, whatever you call it. And, uh, we'll wait.
As they're existing or they're new?
Yeah, they're new, I guess. Uh, our, our new line, it's gonna run through there.
I meant for their facility though, cause they'll have two connects. One at their new location and one at their current location.
They definitely hooked on in ShopCo.
Right, they were talking about the new location, right?
ShopCo's the one I'm thinking of.
Cause they wanted.
That's why I was just wondering what Nathan's question was, because.
He wanted to know whether we could waive the cost.
Right, but I didn't know if he was talking about both, cause there's gonna be two tap fees.
I thought he was only talking about ShopCo.
Well, he saved us about sixty-seven thousand dollars for the right of ways, so I had no problem with both being waived, but still, uh, what is it, a thousand dollars? Versus sixty-seven saved, that's what the company.
We're still money, huh?
We're still sixty-five thousand, so.
I just didn't know if that, that would play our part.
I'll make two taps at, one at the.
But they're two different locations.
You're talking main plant, then you're talking ShopCo.
Yeah.
The main plant's already hooked up.
Not to the new system.
No, that's, that's why we're doing it.
They have a grinder come, that's why we're fixing it up there for them, cause they'll have two connections.
But, but regardless, I don't know how that rest port feels, but I have no problem waiving the connection of both, both sides, just, cause they saved us, well.
A lot of money.
A lot of money.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
Second, thank you.
On paper.
Alright. Uh, well, way back to that, as a final parcel of land being acquired, we will know.
I got that, uh, so this is the acquisition for the Wheeler property, it just, it's, you guys already voted to acquire it.
Yes.
On their counter offer, it just needs to be signed by Dave. And I don't know why they had it set for the clerk of treasury to sign, but.
Sign away.
Um, but still, listen to one more piece.
Yeah, he's in our.
I think, well.
I'd like to live this project.
I know.
I may not live if it's not finished, let me just say that.
Uh, yeah, I think we still have one piece of ground, um.
This one year project is what, are we looking at year five or six now?
So, so.
This is the last property then?
There's one more, I think, um.
Yeah.
I'm not sure which one it is, but I believe there'd be one more.
Well, on page?
Yeah.
Yeah, our, 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 isn't the idea to let this out, put out, of course, in December, wasn't that the hope? Yeah.
They can still move ahead and do it, I mean, I think they feel like they're, they're getting to a solution, it's just.
Well, I think that's. They were going to go ahead and do that regardless, and, and get this worked out, whatever you want, uh, so that means we'd be constructing next.
Oh, we're, I just got home.
Yeah.
Whoa, that's what's been. Right there. Uh.
I probably will be very anxious on that.
Was there any, we as a town board could do?
We already.
Yeah, we're, it's on the minutes already, last meeting.
No, I think Jeff's got his, you know, he's just helping.
Make paper airplane.
Make sure everybody's settled there with the Scott Pet conversation and, um.
Okay. She likes to.
The thing that Randy's, and Jeff probably already has this, but kind of where they're at on the Gooch thing, Jeff, do you remember something with N-Dot and?
Yeah, and I think, eh, anyway, I don't wanna, you know, discuss the negotiations, but, uh.
It's a long.
Right.
I, I talked to Brian Hood, and there may be an ask or two in there, you know, as part of the negotiations as well.
B A Y.
An ask on the part of the owner, uh, to the town board.
Okay, well.
In, in return for consideration of X, we'll do Y.
Well, when you got leverage, they, sometimes they use it, and, uh, so yeah, well, good, sounds like progress has been made.
Get Jeff on that, on the ShopCo one. And Brian should know that there are three different person that you're gonna cross.
Yeah, and, and you know.
Wow, we have a lot of business out next year, we have, uh, South Market, we have.
In the, like we're building it. That's the drive, so you're gonna cross this one, this one.
Need to spend money, so.
But we're leveraging our money.
So you're gonna get all of these.
We're getting good results.
We are.
Just to make sure that whatever they're, some of these in the lake, we have all of those three parcels, you can have that if that's helping.
I don't like spending money.
Yeah, Brian.
It's a vast, this is the vastest infrastructure.
No. That's what that eight or eight means for.
Yeah, and the only tap fee.
Well, yeah, we need to talk more about that.
I hope that, well, that's just.
So, what force tell is we're waving the feet here since.
Would you do some, yeah.
I've ordered you something on that, I think Jared had it, it's a booklet that's like twenty pages long, though.
So.
A little nighttime right here.
Where are we at, guys?
Nope, Jeff's got none.
Are you done? Do you have anything to add, Cindy?
Nope, I got it.
Sure. Yeah. Alright, Randy.
Hey, should you have planes for five twenty-one nine oh two sixty-five?
I'll make a motion, I was part has questions.
Let's just go through and take a look.
I'm already leaving.
We made our payment for the debt, the sewer.
And I have a change for a lot of those too, just to kind of, they, and I didn't get around to it.
Made the housing payment, the housing. I, I, regarding the housing stuff, I heard some people say they, they, one didn't receive, then they received something that said they didn't turn it back in. Another one, they received it and they received it again. I don't know, there seem to be some, I don't know.
That's not the housing, that is the income survey for the water.
The income survey, okay, that's what it is.
They didn't include the two dollars like all.
We did not include any cash. You did not appreciate that, Liddy. Add any cash. Mandy's been working on that one.
So we had a payment here for forty-one North, again, sewer, uh, design, seventy-six hundred. What else we have? Oh, here's this canine, how did we pay for the canine cage thing?
That's coming from foundation.
Okay, it's foundation paid, that's seven thousand twenty-six dollars.
They, uh, we have ten thousand from the foundation to complete that.
There was a grant, yeah.
Good. Uh, I don't know what version, our two hundred and twenty thousand electricity box.
The lights burning.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, then I saw we paid seven one seven one two for the sh- two vehicles, that was our.
That's, yeah, just what I gave to Bill and that, yeah, once we submit those invoices to USCA.
We get reimbursed for that.
Yeah, yeah, so that money will be coming back into the general fund, but you won't see it necessarily right now, at least until.
Okay. Yeah.
It's still pending, all you have to do is second it.
I said?
On paper.
Alright. So the ball state survey is one of ours?
No.
No, okay, cause I, I was like, I wonder who this went to, because.
Alright, I've got my leak adjustments.
Yes.
Today to current.
Six months.
Eighteen thousand two seventy-eight ninety-four. No, I mean, I thought all of them here that, you know, and if anybody wants to go through them, I did go, we've gone through these today in the office. Um, there wasn't anything in here that's.
Well, what's the bulk of the reason for them, I mean?
Um, well, the summertime, we have those couple of months of cool bills, that's quite a bit that we do just on your water. Um, not everybody's water, but most of them are leak adjustments. Um, it seems like we have more and more people that are having leaks, so, you know, we make them, so there's, there's stuff in here, um, from various different companies, um, if, once they've done a repair on their leak. I mean, we had a couple that were hundred and sixty-five thousand gallons of water.
The Stroud's house has never had water in there, and it's standing on the north side now, it's not on our side, it's on their side. And it seems like it's always there, but somebody said they didn't, they didn't think they had a leak, so I don't know where it's coming from.
We need more studies to.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and we have a couple of, well, I know I've got one person that we did just turn the water off, um, they've kind of refused to fix their leaks, and, and not, not refuse, but they say they don't have one.
Oh.
So, you know, you're kind of in the position to where they, if they don't have a leak, that's fine, but they need to pay the water bill portion of that, if that's the case, before we turn it off, so we've kind of ran into that on a couple of residents as well, so.
People live there.
There is.
Dining or something on those.
Or empty property.
Um, not right now, um, Community Action's got a new water program.
Ah.
That they, um, are asking to take applications for funding for past due. So I just forward those people to Community Action for, you know, see if you, see if you qualify, and, you know, if you, you don't have the resources to pay it, then maybe they can help you out with it, so.
I make a motion for the adjustments.
So I can't.
That's, on paper, alright. What choice do we have? Yeah, yeah.
Um, and then where I already kind of touched base, I just have that information in there, but just this morning I received, we were getting the I-PED grant for the portion of what the fire department.
I was signing all of these.
Just the top one, I just combined it as one, so we didn't have to sign several, um. It's all out.
Alrighty, um. You, Cindy?
Yeah, I'm done.
You, you or Randy, how, how's our income survey going?
Oh. We have received a total of a hundred and ninety-one responses.
Out of?
Three hundred and twenty-five.
That's not bad. That's not bad.
But we need a hundred and thirty-four more.
Okay. Okay.
Mandy has been dedicated to getting these responses, so they mailed up, mailed out the first time, they didn't respond. She has tried calling if they have phone numbers, and she's gotten a lot of responses that way. If she didn't have phone numbers, then she mailed a second survey. Um, but we need at least two hundred and ninety-seven responses.
That's from residents within the town?
That were randomly selected to take the survey, yes.
Can we, can we not randomly select more if we don't give enough?
We can, it just adds more cost to your.
Right.
Cycle, so she just mailed them end of last week?
Yeah, I think, uh, they just sent it to the mail, because they ran one in today, and she said, this is the second time, and I got the first one, and I'm not filling it out.
The second, the second one is. But she must have returned the first one.
We tried to. We tried to explain to them the importance of.
Yeah.
You know, the need to get those returned, but some people are out, but they're not.
So we're, we are required at least three attempts before we can detect that address, so.
If we don't fail you, the return will result in water rate.
Ten percent penalty on your next water.
Everybody's water rate will go up if we don't get this many returned surveys.
And of the hundred and ninety-one, that we have five are either like vacant or deceased, so we can't really count those. So, a hundred and eighty-six is really what we have in true responses.
Which is pretty good, because we've done a lot of the calling, I mean.
Yeah.
It really happened a lot.
The phone calls was a ten, an attempt?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Done that and still working on, I think, through that list of, so, yeah, I mean, we can fill it out over the phone if we are in contact with that person, so.
So after the third attempt, if we do not get a response, then we can go on to another selected list, um, if we need to.
Maybe we need to sew like more carefully.
I have to use an online randomizer, so I, it shoots bits numbers at me, that's all I see, so, um, I have a feeling with the way the responses are coming in, we're probably going to need to add more to that grouping to get us where we need to be to apply for the grant.
The number doesn't change though, does it, it stays it.
Two ninety-seven.
Okay.
I think with the, if it comes to the second mail, I think we can achieve that. If, if we can go with that second, um, selected group, maybe.
Yeah, we're at one eighty-six, so we're really looking at about a hundred and ten.
Yeah, okay, but of the hundred and ten, again, remember where you're, you're hoping to be, to be eligible to apply.
Right.
We're not leaning in that direction.
Well, thank you for the information.
You're very welcome.
So.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, where we at, are you, are you?
I'm done.
So we're down to legal counsel, legal counsel.
I was gonna, what? To you back jump running out real quick.
Oh, you maxed out stuff.
You guys can flip a coin, Jordan, Chris can go, or you can both go, or, if you got anything.
Oh, alright, I was just gonna bring up, um, and I have, um, did you tell Jeff about the VFD?
No.
We did have a, uh, VFD, we've been having issues with it at the sewer plant on the main, the main lift station.
I forget what means, VFD, legal.
Variable frequency drive, it ramps the pumps up and that, but anyways, we've been having over attempts for a long time now, but it finally, we think it took a, it, it died.
It slowed down like.
Yeah, so, we, uh, talked to signal engineering, the guy, they're usually the guys that work on it. And they did find one for us, and just the VFD alone was sixty-eight hundred bucks, but he's gonna come out and just double check, just because we told him over the phone. We tried to troubleshoot it, well, but we're ninety percent sure that it's, it's fried despite what is doing. He's gonna come out and verify it, and then we'll, we'll probably, we'll get with Jeff, and we get a, an official quote on that, um.
You said sixty-eight hundred?
Yeah, that was just the VFD, this for the part, so, uh, we'll get with you on that one. Um, and then on the transfer swi- switch, we're still waiting on, uh, another quote on that, when I came with you, it was just one. And we had this guy come and look at it, and, uh, there's a lot of other questions, I, I think we're gonna get a better quote with this. Cause there's gonna be some, some changing and things that, that's gonna have to be done to keep the other pumps online, that, I don't know if the other quote really had that included in it. So, we're gonna have to get a backup generator and run it, and to keep everything working, to switch everything over, but as soon as we get that, we'll come back with you on, on that. And they started, we've got one alarm installed, and they're coming back this week to, uh, install a couple more, and then next week, then we'll have alarms on the plant for, for callouts. I think, didn't you guys say you want a Jeff number to be the first one of all? So.
It's not the thing for ideas.
So, now we'll get, we'll, we'll put our numbers on there, but we'll put Jeff and that, we'll, we'll have like four or five numbers on there, so one person doesn't answer, it'll just roll over to the next one, so.
Stick Dave's off first.
We'll put Dave's on there.
Stay on there.
And. That looks bad, I mean, I can't, I can't.
Bruce beginning there.
He's in pretty good shape. Okay. Oh, we did fuel up the generators, yeah, we got everything fueled back up, so we're in good shape. Hey, you know, Will, this is a good question, I mean, this is, you guys are talking about leaks, and it got me thinking. There's this thing out there called ServLine, and I don't sell it, I don't, but some of the other towns we work for have it. And it's, it's like an insurance policy for leaks, and it pays up to like twenty-five hundred dollars for the customer's lost bill, and goes towards repair of the leak. And it's something that you can offer, the utilities can offer, uh, the customers. And, I don't know, I mean, if, the Alliance, uh, they kind of represent that.
What, what's the name of the?
It's called ServLine. But I know a lot of, of other smaller systems have done that. People have signed up and it's, you know, they've had leaks and it's covered your lost revenue, you get paid for it.
Kind of a little insurance policy.
Yeah, then it helps them out, because it'll help their cost of repairing the leak, but, uh.
Do you know what it was?
I, I forget, I think it's a very small amount, it goes on the bill.
Something.
Um, you know, like Adman's used it, Reels Bill, um, but no, we can deal with the Alliance, they, they promote that.
And another thought too, on that, uh, dig out on Martin Street. I do have at least one more quote on that I need to look at before I bring that back to you guys. Uh, cause I know that Roger had at least one, maybe two other quotes.
That culvert.
I thought we just approved it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, I'm going back through my mind, I'm thinking, hold off on that, because I need to take a look at that other quote or two, on, on that, I'm sorry, I apologize.
The Martin Street, the culvert thing, I think it was nineteen thousand.
Martin Street, the, uh, twelve-inch line repair.
So we made a motion for nineteen five for that approval, and we're not.
We're gonna wait.
Yeah, stand by on that. It occurred to me as I was sitting here thinking, sorry.
Hey, did anybody notice the house, um, um, quarters old house?
Yes.
They cleared a whole bunch out, I don't know if it was the property owner. Maybe we could. Maybe we could, remember, we talked about having an access road back there at one point?
Mm-hmm.
Looks like they did some of that.
Well, that big tree fell in a storm this summer.
Okay.
That's where they did burn it up, actually fell the previous summer, and they said sold since.
Right.
Um, yeah, I know that access road, and we, uh.
Cause it took so long to get back there, but I guess that was before we had the three phase.
Well, we had, we had to bring, put in the breakers on that so we can isolate. But, uh, it's still an issue, it is, it's there, what, um. I would agree with that. So Nick.
Me?
Do we, do we need to do anything or send that, or we just, we just gonna?
What was it?
The Martin.
She marked it.
On Martin Street repair.
I re-vote my motion.
I just wish, make a motion to rescind everything and.
I make a motion to rescind.
Second.
Yep.
On favor.
Aye.
That was me.
I guess.
Um, just a few things, we, we had a D Z A a while back, we had two, uh, fundings effect that we do, I have those done, we'll be going out to, for signatures tomorrow. One was for the school project, the other one was as to a, uh, residential, um, property over behind. By L G A, basically, the church there, so I finally got those drafted the other day, so they'll go out tomorrow for signatures. We have, uh, ordinance rev- or ordinance violation hearings tomorrow, and again, next Tuesday. Our next small claims is eleven twenty three, and then twelve twenty one are our next small claims dates, so, um, that, that's what I figured out from anyway.
And we need to set, we set budget workshops to.
Oh, yeah, we gotta do that. Yes, we're one and eighty, most likely.
I have, I still need for New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve, excellent. Uh.
It's my first time.
We're, uh.
Then we met in a snowstorm one, and it was like, what the properties.
We gotta have fun here. Uh, so, I mean, we, we typically, Monday is, is Monday a good day for most of you? Since.
The second Monday is part four.
We have part four next Monday, so, and then the fourth Monday is Thanksgiving, they were.
Are you gonna go?
Maybe.
Thanksgiving days.
Okay, let me just, I'm gonna just.
The fourth Monday is what?
Week of Thanksgiving.
Oh, week of.
So we should meet the twenty second, is what you're saying.
Thanksgiving.
Well, the next town board meeting is the fifteenth, uh.
They're the twenty ninth open.
Yeah, but I think we probably oughta have, we're, it's gonna take two to three, I, I, I'm hoping we can keep it down to at least four. I'm serious, you know how these go, every year.
Sometimes I get heated.
But, uh, well, what time do you park board, do you do? Five, seven, six.
That's it.
And I think I'm.
Seven being running that one, so it's gonna be pretty quick.
Oh. Well. We should try to have one before the next meeting.
You can only do Mondays and Wednesdays, is that right?
Where's the due, Park is part board here.
Mm-hmm. We'd be done by six thirty at the latest.
So we can have one next Monday, you mean?
It's not gonna be long.
Say the word.
Well, I'm getting.
Six thirty.
Six thirty next Monday?
There's a timeline, we can't.
November eight.
Eight, until eight, six thirty to eight.
Yeah, I'd rather have more than super long ones.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, I'm looking to you on your calendar, does it ever rate?
Yes, uh, well, the big, the big thing is always, always, always salary, and it's, and. As all aware, I believe you've seen everyone, so I had a copy of the accounting and what they do to the public safety employees, uh, starting wages and. Uh, on duty pay, uh, so that adds obviously increasing pressure on us to, to, uh. Retain people on our current wage structure, um. So, yeah, I, that's probably where we should start. Uh, utilities are much easier payroll, um.
Oh, yeah.
So, let's all come in next Monday night at six thirty with payroll ordinance on our minds. And, uh.
Or shot glasses and bourbon.
Yeah, yeah.
Add one more additional.
That makes them even a lot better.
A lot better. More, more easy to go with the way.
That wouldn't be very productive.
Hey, I, I had one more thing.
I disagree.
The county, uh, had a question, the outdoor weather sirens, they were wondering if the individual towns have them insured or not. I didn't know the answer, if it was on our inventory of insured property or not.
Are they actually ours or?
So they were purchased by a grant, and the county currently has them insured, but.
What is it?
The outdoor weather sirens. But, so the question was whether or not the towns have them insured or not, cause the county currently has insurance, but they're not certain they want to continue with it. I told them I'd ask the two towns that I'll see, but I don't know the answer to that question, whether it's insured or not.
Wasn't there an original agreement though?
Not that I was a party too, so.
Cause some people have had to sign for maintenance and so.
I don't know the answer to those questions.
Would've been ceasefire, wouldn't it?
Well, I'm thinking of council.
There's, so, there's gotta be.
Randy Nealon always seems to know about, like, he knows information about it, so.
So the E nine one one director is the one talking about it, but. His understanding was the county didn't have an obligation to insure them. I, it predates me, I believe, if not, I wasn't a party to it, so.
They didn't work out.
Well, they're gonna say, what if it's, they should get our inventory.
It's just sirens that go off if there's like tornado or things like that, I think.
I'll check, and I'll check with the township too, I don't know who received the grant that purchased them and.
Okay. I didn't know if there's any other agreements that went along with it, but I think they've been there for a while, so.
I think it goes back maybe even to V X.
That's what I said, I think it's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, probably so.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is gonna be really old stuff.
Probably put a map, but there would've had to have been an agreement in place or.
I mean, do we have now?
For making it for.
That's, yeah.
So why, I thought.
It's probably just the one on the door, outside, I would say.
Well, we have, we have.
Is there?
Get a minimum, do something, if the battery handle works, there's always an issue.
I don't know, so any, any information we have on that would be helpful.
I'll look at ours, to see, but for someone, I want to say there's something.
I can see if I can.
And then, so, then, for a limited amount, they talked about maybe being willing to continue to cover it, but wanting to reverse or something, but I don't know, I told them I'd.
I'll reach out to you.
See if there's some information together.
The grant for the dog cage.
Oh, I know.
I'm, I have danced for Mandy, but I'm not, I didn't receive the application.
I've been there.
It was directly in the foundation, or when I gone through us?
Right, I mean, I just don't have a copy of it though.
So, um, to change topic, uh, in preparation for our, our budget meeting next week, Randy, could you perhaps email out the current Sally ordinance to everyone, and, and, and. Anything else you think we might find useful, so everybody got some current numbers?
Popcorn.
Popcorn, yeah, we'll get that one.
Pizza.
Pizza, uh-huh.
We do traditionally have that at first.
Yeah, I think somebody, somebody.
We did, no way.
I don't, I don't.
Surely there's some mistakes out there, you, you bet, you probably unaware of.
You know what, you used to get away with saying, saying illegal, like that, can't be that.
Really, somebody, somebody ran the pizza.
Uh-huh. Why can't I make that happen, I'll, uh, I'll get with my, my pizza schedule.
My, I, I'm a bad gambling.
You gotta bet on the things you know, is the key.
Yeah, I know.
Uh.
Don't bet on the things you don't know.
Or I'll just disagree with the outcome and call it a day.
That's not really how that works.
I know.
Okay.
So do you wanna just discuss payroll?
Take me as well.
Well, that, that's, that's where we always get stuck, and it takes forever, and, uh, so, yeah, we should start with.
So we need a copy of every department's.
Who is it?
Wrong.
Payroll requests.
We have the payroll request, we have the current ordinance, uh, yeah, all that stuff, and, you know, we, we'll bring.
Speaking of, if I want to. Sort of.
Yeah, just bring everything we can, get everything we can to, uh, give us something to, uh, start with.
Okay.
Um, Jeff, anything you can think of that we might want?
More money.
Well.
Yeah, yeah. I'll try to come in with the, this for you. We'll see.
Okay, anything else, anybody got anything?
Can I make a question, wait a second?
On favor?
Aye.